I am advised by the town clerk that a quorum is present and I call to order the third session of the annual town meeting. I have no announcements and we will start with a reconsideration of item 53 of Article Nine, the budget article. The green sheets were handed out last night and I will first entertain a motion to reconsider and this is occasioned by a mistake on the part of the people that put together the budget in omitting the bonding language from this item so that we needn't go through the elaborate procedure that's spelled out in the town meeting handbook for reconsideration. Is there a motion to reconsider? Is it seconded? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Thank you. Motion carries. On the motion on the green sheets is to amend item 53 so that it reads as follows. It's a $300,000 appropriation for improvements to the water system to be bonded under Chapter 144. Motion is made by Mr. Waschinsky and seconded by Mr. Lynn Jones. Mr. Waschinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Waschinsky for the Board of Selectmen. We're reconsidering this item not to deal with a substantive change to the appropriation, but just to rectify an error with the funding source. So the new language has a language which allows for a bonding of this item. So I hope you'll vote for this item.
I might also add that this revised appropriation does not change any of the numbers on the table, the budget table. Mr. Lynn Jones, do you want to add anything?
Shaun Lynn Jones, Precinct One, speaking for Unanimous Advisory Committee. You know, sometimes I get the impression the moderator thinks my speeches are too long. Not this time.
Thank you very much.
The advisory committee, including the indispensable Carla Benca, recommends favorable action.
On the motion on the green sheets, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Requires a two-thirds vote, but it's unanimous. We proceed now to Article 16 and the motion under Article 16 is on page 16 dash two to authorize the selectmen to lease for a period of 20 years, not to exceed 20 years, the rooftop space on the Runkle School building. It's moved by Ms. Heller, seconded by Ms. Lodesh. Ms. Heller. And Ms. Hamlin, if you're in the auditorium, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Heller for Unanimous Board of Selectmen. This article has come up because we had been working with a company called Blue Wave to install solar panels on the Runkle roof. We had a public hearing last July. We proceeded to begin negotiating a licensing agreement. Blue Wave then decided that it needed additional partners, capital partners, and one of those, IGS Solar, has insisted upon either an easement or a lease agreement rather than a licensing agreement. Town Council believed and has communicated to us that the preferable way to go is a lease agreement, which needs to be approved by town meeting. An easement is a property right, in very simple language, an easement is a property right and a lease is a contract. And Town Council is of the belief that it's better to negotiate the lease. So we have done that and we need town approval, town meeting approval for this lease. The lease would be for a term of 20 years. The town would bear no responsibility for installation or maintenance of the panels. The installation is going to save us $30,000 a year in electricity costs, just at the Runkle School. Blue Wave and its partners can use tax credits to reduce their costs, which is an advantage the town does not have if we had invested the money to purchase the solar panels ourselves. So please join the Unanimous Board of Selectmen and vote favorable action on our motion on this article. Thank you.
Ms. Lodesh and Mr. Vitolo, will you come forward, please?
The advisory committee also voted unanimously by a vote of 24 to nothing.
Mr. Vitolo.
Short, but not that short. Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Nearly 10 years ago, a first-term selectman was placed on the Runkle Building Committee charged with expanding and improving the Runkle School. Although she was not widely known as an environmental-focused selectman, a greenie-weenie, if you will, she lobbied for several forward-thinking green features at Runkle, including putting solar panels on the roof. "It'll never work," she was told. Ha! The naysayers couldn't see the future. This deal makes solid fiscal sense. This deal makes solid climate change fighting sense. And so I wonder aloud if perhaps the naming committee might explore a Runkle solar installation named for that selectman. And so I ask this body to give former selectman Nancy Daly her 20 years in the sun. Please vote yes for Article 16.
Mr. Olens.
Andy Olens, Precinct Five. Although Nancy mentioned that there is some sort of a protection for the cost of installation and the maintenance of the roof, I personally get very nervous when anybody's up on my roof. And I want to make clear, I would like somebody to make clear, what the guarantee is of the protection and maintenance of that roof. I refer back here to the times we have had the cable companies dig up the roads and they patch the roads, but as we all know, that ultimately inures to the detriment of the town because of the issues so involved. So I am concerned about how we maintain the quality of that new roof at Runkle. Thank you.
Town Council or Ms. Goff?
Sure. The details of the lease are still being negotiated by Town Council. We have been working with the MAPC and it was a regional procurement and so they have been thoroughly vetting the template that we are now going to be using for Runkle. And there have been other communities, Melrose being the most recent, that have used this template and will make sure that we're very mindful of the protections before we have the board executed as well.
Thank you. On the motion on page 16 dash two, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 17. Motion is on page 17 dash four, moved by Mr. Waschinsky, seconded by Mr. Levitan, that the town accept a grant of easement from Chestnut Hill Investments, et cetera, in the words of the motion. Mr. Waschinsky.
Neil Waschinsky for the Board of Selectmen. This easement that we're asking you to accept on behalf of the town is the result of a project where the Transportation Board and the Department of Public Works have recommended that a loading zone be installed at the corner of Hammond and Route Nine, adjacent to the project. So doing would encroach on the sidewalk and narrow the sidewalk. So what this easement does is it extends the public way into private property to keep the sidewalk width constant, so it maintains a pedestrian-friendly environment and we ask that you vote for it. Thank you.
Mr. Levitan.
The advisory committee concurs by a vote of 24 to nothing and urges favorable action on the acceptance of the easement.
The next time he speaks, Mr. Levitan will tell us who he is. On the motion on page 17 dash four, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We now turn to Articles 18 and 19, each of which involve substantially the same subject matter and so we will have a single debate on the two motions. The motion under Article 18 is found on page 18 dash three, moved by Ms. Hamilton, seconded by Ms. Khan, to accept the provisions of Chapter 90, Section 17(c). And the motion under Article 19 is found on page 19 dash three, moved again by Ms. Hamilton, seconded by Ms. Khan, to accept the provisions of Chapter 90, Section 18(b). Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Heather Hamilton for Unanimous Board of Selectmen. One of the most frequent requests that comes before the Transportation Board is to reduce the speed limit in certain neighborhoods. Up until last summer, cities and towns were unable to address these requests because it was under the state's purview. However, the state legislature has allowed cities and towns the option of home rule, allowing us to reduce the speed limit default of 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour in thickly settled or business districts. Article 18 would allow Brookline to take advantage of this home rule option. Article 19 would allow Brookline to establish designated safety zones, which will be posted as having a speed limit of 20 miles per hour. The selectmen were supportive of safety zones, which would work similar to school zones. There was a consensus that there is a need to identify safety zones where a 20 mile per hour speed limit would be enforced. The selectmen expressed the desire to designate the high school as a safety zone and agreed with the Transportation Board to designate similar areas such as parks and playgrounds, senior centers, and other high-traffic areas. As a transportation professional by day, I want to stress how important it is for the town of Brookline to take advantage of this home rule option and exercise it in these safety zones. The difference in injury or death of a pedestrian when struck at 30 miles per hour versus 20 miles per hour is enormous. Even if people do not adhere to the 20 mile per hour limit, they usually will reduce their speed by five miles per hour compared to what they would have been driving otherwise and could be the difference between life and death. I will let the Chair of the Transportation Board speak more on these issues, but the Board of Selectmen urges favorable action on Articles 18 and 19. Thank you.
Mr. Levitan.
I'm Fred Levitan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 14, and a member of the advisory committee. I speak on my own behalf, not on anyone else's. I'm a former Chair and member of the Transportation Board between 1992 and 2004. So I'm fairly familiar with traffic calming and with the method of changing speed limits. Up until a year ago, you had to figure out and calculate the 85th percentile of a roadway and then apply and you couldn't lower a speed limit if the 85th percentile was higher than the speed limit you currently had. So if we had a roadway that had a 30 mile an hour speed limit and residents wanted a lower limit, they would put out counters and they'd test the speed of the cars on the roadway and the 85th percentile of those cars would be the lowest limit rounded up to the next five miles per hour that you could set a speed limit at. That's changed dramatically. I have worries, though, that people drive at the speeds that roads were designed for. You drive down Beacon Street, you generally don't do 30 miles an hour. If you look at your car and the wide portions of Beacon Street, people are driving 35 to 40 miles an hour. It's generally between 5 and 10 miles an hour. The 85th percentile is generally 5 to 10 miles an hour above the posted speed limits. I don't think by installing speed signs or by lowering speed limits, you're going to lower the cars, the speed of the cars. You need to have enforcement to do that. And unless we plan widespread enforcement, I think this is a mistake. I know I'm not in the majority here and I expect this to pass town meeting quite easily, but I just want people to understand that by voting tonight to adopt this, you're not going to be necessarily lowering speed limits. My understanding is the Transportation Board intends to treat the town as a whole, that the entire town is thickly settled with the exception of Route Nine, which we can't control. I also think that's a mistake. I think that we should be treating roadways that have issues. If there's a road where there's an accident history, then we should treat it. We should lower the speed limits. We should do traffic calming on it. We should do whatever we can to make that road safer for pedestrians and motorists and bicyclists and everybody that uses the roadway. But most of our roadways don't need that, don't have that high accident history that you would want to go out and then treat and lower the speed limits. So I urge caution and I also urge caution in creating 20 mile an hour speed zones. What we do now is we take the 30 and we make it 25 in a school zone and we can only do that during, in our elementary schools. You can't do it to a high school. It has to be a K to eight. But this new law will allow changes around daycare centers, changes around the high school, changes around other locations throughout the town that may or may not be smart and I want to see this handled properly by the town and I'm afraid that the way it's heading, it won't be done that way. So that's all I have to say. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Safer. We'll hear from the Transportation Board.
Josh Safer, Precinct 16 and Transportation Board, Chair of the Transportation Board. Articles 18 and 19 give powers to lower speed limits to Brookline rather than the state. They do not force us to do anything. From the number of speakers signed up and the number of TMMA listserv posts, you'd think this was a controversial article, but this is really pretty simple. Motor vehicles are the leading cause of unintentional injury deaths in the United States and leading cause of deaths for young people. And, if you don't call the question by being bored and it's early, so I think you might not, there's going to be more data to come from some of our colleagues with some specific and dramatic statistics along those lines regarding links of motor vehicle speed and safety and some very elegant pictures, don't forget to ooh and ah. Not surprisingly, residents come before the Transportation Board seeking to slow traffic with calming and other measures, which we use to get to the target speed. But, a target at 30 miles an hour, and you can imagine at the 85th percentile, that means that cars can go above that 30 miles an hour, that target is too high. So as your dutyful servants, the Transportation Board and staff have been joining with Boston to petition the state legislature to allow us to lower our speed limits locally. Indeed, along with Boston, we've been petitioning the legislature for years to grant us the local authority to lower our speed limits and more correctly fit our dense local conditions rather than be obligated to follow the rules designed for more suburban or rural areas of Massachusetts. That this passed the legislature and got the governor's signature last year is a win for our community. And I was intending to just come before you and say, I'm delighted to be able to say to you as the Transportation Board Chair that Articles 18 and 19, a total no-brainer that should be supported by acclamation, are a major victory for urban towns such as ours. A number of concerns about the plans have been raised and while I can't forecast all the details, I can certainly address a few of the issues. First, there's a concern of a patchwork of rules. And as I said, I can't speak for the entire Transportation Board on each of these points, but I can say that the philosophy of the Board is coherence when we can and I personally would favor a plan that is town-wide, like Fred Levitan just mentioned, minus some obvious exceptions like Route Nine. With Boston, Cambridge, and Newton already on board, we can make for fewer changes in speed limits from road to road between us and them by doing similarly and make actually a more uniform environment. Second, a concern was raised on the listserv about the risk of an unintended consequence of such a change being felt disproportionately on some members of our community and that is a fair concern to raise. And after we pass these articles, which I am confident we will, we should collect data to address that particular concern and fix a problem if one is found and our police department already has such a process for that. To that fair worry about the impact being felt in one community more than another, for what it's worth, note that in the city of Boston, some of us have heard Tito Jackson, a strong supporter of this sort of initiative, having the opposite focus with a priority of his being on his young constituents playing in the streets who might be threatened by the faster vehicles. Third, revenue. That has never been a Transportation Board goal that gets raised from time to time. Our logic is pricing to influence behavior, not to raise funds. This will not be different. I would note, as you've already heard, many have asked us to lower their speed limits. In fact, almost an equal number of people chimed in on the listserv asking for specific speed limit lowering in various areas of town as we're commenting on other issues. But we've had no recent request to raise the speed limit. I would also forecast a few more 20 mile per hour zones will be coming. Current state rules, like Fred already noted, forbid us from applying the 20 mile per hour other than very narrowly at elementary schools, so daycares, private schools, et cetera. If we pass these articles, we can actually have the conversations that we had on the listserv that we're having a little bit tonight at the transportation meeting, live and in person, where we can actually do something rather than just wishing we could do something. This is not controversial. It's good news, people. Let's just say thank you to the state and now vote ourselves more local control over our roadways by supporting Article 18 and 19. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Janice Khan, Precinct 15, speaking for the advisory committee. The advisory committee will recommend favorable action on both motions, on both warrant Article 18 and 19, but the vote was quite different, so I'm going to address them separately. Warrant Article 18 would allow the Transportation Board, as you heard, to, after public hearings, lower the default speed limit from 30 miles per hour to 25... Ah, it's been a long day. ...miles per hour in thickly settled residential areas and business districts. Essentially, the entire town qualifies for this. So it can be done either town-wide or, as you heard, by neighborhood or roadway except for state highways such as Haven Pond Parkway, West Roxbury Parkway, Boilston Street and Horace James Circle. The primary reason for doing this is, as has been mentioned, safety. Reduced speed of vehicles associated with greater safety for pedestrians and, I might add, bicyclists. So in August 2016, not 1996 as a misprint in your write-up, in our write-up, the legislature passed the Municipal Modernization Act, which consists of over 253 reforms intended to improve municipal governance. Most deal with financial aspects and helping towns and cities with those. But they got these reforms from wish lists from towns and cities throughout the Commonwealth. The act was signed into law by Governor Baker and went into effect on November 7th of last year. Within these are two provisions that would authorize, allow municipalities with authority to lower speed limits within their borders. And that's warrant Articles 18 and 19 that deal with that. So if we accept these articles... Well, let's start with warrant Article 18. If it is accepted by the municipality, it would allow the appropriate municipality authority, which is the Transportation Board in Brookline, to lower the speed limit by five miles per hour. Right now, it's 30. It would go to 25. And as has been said, both Boston and Newton, which can do this by just their, you know, by a different process, by the city council, can do this. In our town, we have to do this through the Transportation Board, which is very good news for us. We get a lot of public input on decisions regarding this. So, as has been said, traffic calming is the number-one request of the Transportation Board. And we've done such things as construct rotaries, speed humps, raised crosswalks, and curb But we now have an opportunity to do a different kind of traffic calming by reducing speeds. As has been said, the Transportation Board would prefer to lower this speed limit to 25 miles per hour town-wide, which would bring us into alignment with our neighboring municipalities and prevent the kind of patchwork that people are afraid of happening, going from Newton suddenly having another speed limit in Brookline, suddenly having a different speed limit in Boston, since our roads clearly connect all the municipalities. There was a... So I'll list a couple of concerns that came up at the advisory committee. Would cars drive slow enough to abide by the 25 mile an hour speed limit? They typically now go above that, above 30. But the idea is that any reduction would have a positive safety impact. And another concern, if they're reduced on local streets, it might push cars onto the arterial roads like Route Nine or parkways. But those roads are already heavily trafficked, heavily congested, and so in fact, cars have been coming off and going onto our local neighborhood streets. So this might in fact be another way of traffic calming for our local streets and residents would like this trend to be reversed. The other issue that came up was cost. What would be the cost of putting up new signs? But the actual, the information is that there are approximately 30 signs at the borders. That's where you would put the signs. And it's at most $100 a sign, probably less. So this is not a huge cost for the town. By a vote of 40 in favor for, opposed, and one abstention, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on the motion offered by the selectmen. Warrant Article 19 is different. So whereas warrant Article 18...
You have one minute.
Okay. I've got very short comment. It's a broad stroke. Warrant Article 19 is a finer tool for reducing speeds in what are called safety zones. These are 20 mile per hour zones. We have already, it would empower us to do more safety zones than was currently, was allowed under the former state law, which was only around elementary schools or private schools, lower schools by request of the town. The big concern, as was said, is that there might be a whole lot of safety zones, creating a lot of chaos here. One particular issue was on Harvard Street, where there are daycare centers.
You have 30 seconds.
Yes. So, but it's noted that Harvard Street already is a slow street. This is not going to affect, going to affect that street very much. So by a vote of 12 in favor, a narrow majority, 10 opposed, the advisory committee recommends favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez and Ms. Joswicki, you might as well take a seat because I've got four people, speakers, and I'll make sure that you get called on before we call the question. And Chief O'Leary, would you come down, sit in the front row, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Raul Fernandez, Town Meeting, Precinct Nine. I rise to offer a perspective on warrant Articles 18 and 19 that does not appear in the article's description or the Board of Selectmen or advisory committee's recommendations. As you know, Article 18, if passed, would circumvent a more thorough, some would say laborious, mass-dot process providing Brookline with the flexibility to lower speed limits from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour on specified roadways in, quote, "thickly settled residential areas or business districts." That the Transportation Board or the advisory committee defines thickly settled areas as all of Brookline is news to me and likely many to many of you, as that interpretation does not appear anywhere in the article before us. In fact, in the selectmen's own recommendations, it does say that this provision would allow the Transportation Board to have the authority to go street by street to implement the lower speed limits. Article 19 would further create additional 20 mile an hour zones around areas like Brookline High School, daycare centers, et cetera. Seems innocuous enough. The undeniable fact is that slower drivers do equal safer roads for pedestrians, cyclists, and other drivers, so who could possibly be against this article? What crazy person is this? I ask you to consider the possibility that lowering speed limits in some but not all areas will likely result in more drivers of color, many though not all, who are just passing through Brookline, being disproportionately stopped by police. Please allow me to explain. This is an issue that is historically well-known to drivers of color in the area and is borne out by stats in Brookline PD's most recent annual report. Despite its good intentions, the change... Despite its good intentions, the change proposed in these articles would exacerbate that phenomenon. Commendably, Chief O'Leary and the brass at Brookline PD have long acknowledged this issue and have taken steps to mitigate the impact of bias through enhanced officer training. I met with Chief O'Leary earlier this week to discuss this issue, and I have great confidence that it's on his radar. Radar. Nevertheless, it stands to reason that the change proposed by Warrant Articles 18 and 19 could lead many drivers, like all of us, to unknowingly pass through multiple speed limit zones during a single trip through town. This change will provide opportunity for police stops of some drivers exceeding those limits, and consequentially, more opportunity for implicit bias and more overt forms of discrimination to rear their ugly heads. Please know that this is not a condemnation of Brookline Police as racist at all. Rather, it's an acknowledgement that systemic racism is pervasive and must be accounted for when assessing any policy or legislation. That's entirely the point of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity article, which we'll be voting on soon. It should go without saying that implicit bias in policing is a legitimate concern, yes, even in Brookline. And just as we need speed limits for motorists, many of whom would drive responsibly even without posted limits, so too do we need limits for police, particularly due to the tremendous power and discretion they're granted in the enforcement of their duties. I'll be voting against these two articles, but should they pass, I urge the Transportation Board to consider a lower townwide limit of 25 miles an hour, as they've said, with coolly marked 20 mile per hour zones, with flashing lights like those by the elementary schools. If the intention of the Transportation Board is to create a lower townwide speed limit, why is that not the article before us? The patchwork of zones which these articles give the Transportation Board the ability to create will only result in more police stops exacerbating the problems I've already mentioned. However, the larger issue at hand here is, why wasn't this issue raised by the Transportation Board that submitted the article, or the selectmen or advisory committee that recommended it? As a college professor whose work is focused on equity, diversity, and inclusion, I constantly remind my students to take a step back and consider how policies and practices may have a disparate impact on minoritized populations, something these boards and the committee in this case did not do. I'm not alleging anything nefarious here, only that we all have certain blind spots when it comes to our awareness of issues affecting those who are different from us. And further, that the obvious lack of diversity in town governance has exacerbated those blind spots, resulting in the perspectives of many residents being underconsidered. In the end, my argument here is not as much about speed limits as it is about process that we use to enact policies and pass legislations. That there are voices and perspectives that have long been missing from town governance should be a revelation to no one. My take is that we need to, more diverse voices at the table, and that as we all work to make that happen, we should also be responsible for considering the perspectives of those who aren't yet present when decisions are being made, even and especially the perspectives of those with whom we disagree. Each Brookline Department, Board, or Committee would do well to consider the following question when recommending or taking any action. How may this action disproportionately impact those who do not have a seat at this table, particularly people of color and other underrepresented voices? If this question is not being asked, then we run the risk of unwillingly passing legislation and enacting policies that are inequitable and unjust. As we deliberate and vote on articles in this town meeting and those to come, I urge all parties to consider both our blind spots and the perspectives of others as we work together for a better, safer, and more socially just Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Englander and Mr. Nero, please come forward and sit in the front row, if you're not already
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Scott Englander, Precinct 6. Scott Englander, Precinct 6, and I serve on the Transportation Board, although I don't, I'm not speaking for the entire board. First, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. One is that Article 18 does not apply to places where speeds are already posted. Thickly settled is a term defined in state law. With regard to Article 19, the state recently released detailed guidelines on where and how communities can deploy 20 mile per hour safety zones without state approval, assuming that that article passes. I won't, don't have time to get into the details of those either. Next slide. Oh, here we go. That's good. So why are we doing all of this? Well, for one thing, speed kills. And there are a couple of reasons for that. The first is that reducing speed dramatically reduces the frequency of crashes, because lower speed increases sight lines, reaction times, and reduces braking distance. And the second reason has to do with physics. Are there any BHS grads in the audience? Okay, great. I have a quiz. Does anyone remember the equation for kinetic energy? No? Okay, next slide, please. I didn't think so. Well, this is it. What's significant about it? Well, the kinetic energy transferred in a crash is the impact. That's what's on the left side of the equation. And m is the mass, v is the velocity. And what this means is that the rate of fatalities and severity of the resulting injuries increases exponentially with speed. Next slide, please. And we can see that here in this diagram. On the vertical axis, we have the risk of death, and along the horizontal axis, on the bottom, we have the impact speed. So you can see this exponential relationship. Next slide, please. But here's the main thing to remember, that small reductions in speed result in huge reductions in fatalities. In fact, you can see here that the reduction, that the risk of death at 40 miles per hour is something like 17 times that at 20 miles per hour. So this means if you get, so means you're 17 times more likely to die if you get hit by someone going 40 than by someone going 20. Next, please. In Massachusetts, in 2014, there were 354 deaths due to crashes. And a good chunk of those, the blue segment on the graph, comprises pedestrians, people walking. And now, 354 deaths is, that's about 30 per month. That should be considered an outrage. You can see that people walking are a considerable amount, and of those, seniors are affected disproportionately, because they're the most vulnerable. Next. Massachusetts residents aged 65 and older have the highest rate of pedestrian deaths, and the rate is three times the rate of those under 65. Next slide, please. And you can see why here. The dotted line up above is for a 70-year-old, and the solid line below is for someone who's 30. The risk of death for an older person who's hit is much higher. Next slide. Minorities are disproportionately affected. The fatalities of pedestrians and other people, and this is from a federal report, other people not in vehicles, as percentages of all motor vehicle traffic fatalities, were highest primarily for African-American children. Now, we all want to get quickly through someone else's neighborhood, but we all want cars to go slowly through our own neighborhood. In fact, excessive speed is one of the main complaints that we get at the Transportation Board. These articles will allow us to keep our friends and neighbors safer, no matter what neighborhood. So a question was raised before. Will decreasing speed limits necessarily decrease actual speeds? Well, not always, but on average, yes. And I view speed limit reduction as a tool and a great first step. It costs almost nothing to change and can be put in place and enforced immediately.
You have one minute.
Okay. Subsequent traffic calming measures in the same locations, if warranted, will further realize the outcomes that we're seeking. Next slide, please. The MAPC did a study of the likely benefits due to reducing statutory speed in all of Massachusetts cities and towns on roads where it would be affected, and they only estimated a fraction of the 5 mile per hour speed reduction that the law would result in. But you can see here that the benefits are huge. And this is all in fatalities and money saved. That doesn't even include the improvements in quality of life due to reduced cut-through traffic and noise. Next, please.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. All of these communities have adopted the provisions of Warrant Article 18, reducing the statutory speed limit. And if we fail to pass it, our statutory speed limit will be inconsistent with that of our neighbors, because we'll have no ability to change it. So I urge you to vote in favor of Article 18 to do that, and Article 19, to allow Brookline to create 20 mile per hour safety zones in appropriate places. Thank you.
Mr. Nero. And Mr. Dempsey, would you come forward, please?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Nero. I'm Precinct 5. I'm also a board member of PACS, along with Mr. Fernandez, and a member of the Town's Diversity Commission. I speak on behalf of myself. I support both warrant articles, but I want to reinforce Mr. Fernandez's concerns. Our town is growing in so many ways that make it a place I want to raise my daughter, and the growing diverse population is in one of those ways. You know, it's important that all policymakers in this town, whether it's the Transportation Board, who's going to be, assuming this passes, that's going to be setting speeds, speed zones, whether it's the Board of Selectmen, whether it's the school committee, advisory committee, proponent of warrant articles, any commission, or really, anyone who makes policy in this town, it's important that they make a conscious decision to consider whether their proposed policy or procedure will have a disparate impact on members of a Brookline-protected class. And that's defined in the bylaw, 3.14.1, if you want to take a look at it. It's expansive, but it's important. I would suggest that these groups also document their consideration of this issue. And this doesn't just fall on the shoulders of the chief of police, who, you know, I think we're lucky to have in this town. I think if you look at the annual reports, and you look at the decrease in arrests and crime, if Chief O'Leary could be duplicated and inserted throughout towns and cities in this country, we might not have the mass incarceration issues that we have in this country. So, so get to work. You know, it also doesn't just fall on the Board of Selectmen, and I think, you know, Bernard Green, Selectman Green should be recognized as well and applauded for his efforts. He's been spearheading efforts to consider how policies affect protected classes. He's been spearheading revising our immigration policy in this town, and he's working right now, I believe with Selectman Daly, though I'm not sure who's filling her shoes at this point, but looking at the police policies overall. And that's important, but it...
Ladies and gentlemen, please hold your applause for the end of the presentation.
I should have said, Mr. Moderator, he should be applauded after I speak, but I agree. So, you know, it doesn't just fall on their shoulders. It falls on everyone. As leaders of the community, we need to not only make good policy, but we also do, need to do so in a way that makes clear to protected classes that we care about their concerns and their needs. It's about communication, not just the substance of the policy. And I think that's how we will move beyond diversity and towards inclusiveness and equality. And I would appreciate all of your consideration down the road as you do your jobs as leaders in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Dempsey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and a member of the Transportation Board, speaking for myself. I ask Town Meeting to vote yes on Articles 18 and 19. The context for lowering speed limits is perhaps best portrayed in this form, as a map with Brookline as the center of the universe, as it should be. As many in this room know, next slide, a diverse, diverse Boston City Council last year voted to reduce the default speed limit in Boston to 25 miles per hour. Next slide. And Boston has been joined by not only our neighbors to the west, the city of Newton, but also by Cambridge, Somerville, Arlington, and Chelsea. Belmont Town Meeting also voted to change its default speed limit to 25 miles per hour at their town meeting earlier this month. So they've got us surrounded. Next slide. And that leaves Brookline with a higher default speed than its neighbors and peers. If your fear is that there will be a patchwork of streets with different speed limits, then please join me in voting yes on Article 18. Next slide. Because we will be much better off if we join our neighbors in creating effectively a regional default speed limit in the urban core. Drivers in Brookline, Boston, Somerville, Cambridge, Newton, Arlington, Belmont, Chelsea, and soon other communities can have the peace of mind and confidence that if they don't see a speed limit sign posted, that 25 miles per hour is the limit. Just look at how much more pleasing this slide is than the slide that preceded it. Next slide. So Article 18 would give the Transportation Board the ability, only after a public meeting, to set the speed limit at 25 miles per hour townwide. To be very clear, all roads in Brookline would be aligned on a 25 mile per hour limit, unless otherwise posted, such as on Route 9, on Hammond Pond Parkway, and in posted school or safety zones. The default becomes 25. If you don't see a sign, then you know that's the limit, as you do in Boston, Cambridge, Newton, Somerville, Arlington, Belmont, Chelsea, and soon other neighboring communities. Next slide. Article 19 would give the Transportation Board the ability to create, after a public meeting, notification, after public meeting notification and a waiting period, the ability to create limited and specific special safety zones, only when posted. Remember that any vote by the Transportation Board can be overruled by the Board of Selectmen, and again, that these streets must have posted signs. They will not be random streets throughout town. They will have this sign that you see behind me, "Speed limit 20 miles per hour." So when you see that sign, you know you're in a 20 mile per hour zone. If you don't see a sign, you will know that it will be the default speed limit, which I hope you will vote to move towards 25 miles per hour tonight. Next slide. Reducing speeds in Brookline will save lives. The data is clear, as Scott shared, that if vehicle, as vehicle speed drops, crashes with pedestrians are more likely to be survivable. Next slide. As I conclude, I want to commend Raul for bringing an important voice and perspective to this debate. Raul and I spoke for about 30 minutes last night, and I committed to him that should these articles pass, and should Town Meeting give the Transportation Board the authority, we will set up the meeting to hear these, this issue of reducing speed limits at a time where he can attend and make sure that his voice is heard, not just in Town Meeting, but also before the Transportation Board. I would also commend Chief O'Leary for his willingness to engage with Raul and others that are concerned about this issue, and to work together to ensure that our laws are being enforced equally, regardless of one's skin color and regardless of from where they might be. When you enter Brookline as a resident, a guest, or just passing through, you should know that you are welcome here. And hopefully soon, you will also know that our default speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Please join me in supporting Articles 18 and 19. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Joswicki and Ms. Antonin, would you come forward, please?
Joyce Joswicki, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 9, and a resident of Winchester Street. Before I ask my question, I'll give you a little bit of history about Winchester Street. When I moved here in 1969, there was parking on both sides of the street. Traffic crawled up and down Winchester Street. Children could actually cross the street to play with their friends across the street. In their wisdom, about 30 or 35 years ago, they decided that they wanted to take traffic off of Harvard Street, so they eliminated even side of Winchester Street parking, which meant that our children could not cross the street to go play with each other unless an adult came out, stood in the middle of the road, and waved down traffic. Well, then it became a concern that traffic was speeding up and down Winchester Street, so we had a traffic calming study. Winchester Street is six tenths of a mile long. Going from Beacon Street to Brighton, there are six different speed limits. Going from Brighton to Beacon Street, there are five different speed limits. Going from Beacon Street, there are 42 traffic signs. I'm not counting street... I'm not counting street signs, the names of streets. And going from Brighton to Beacon Street, there are thirty-six signs. I wrote a letter that was in the tab last week about my, the three ways to go over the traffic calming raised crosswalks. Number one is the law abider, who goes up the street, starting at twenty-five miles an hour, slows to twenty, goes over the wa, raised crosswalk, goes back to twenty-five, gets to another raised crosswalk, goes down to twenty, and then goes over. And then there's the speeder who comes down Winchester Street and slams on their brake, goes over the raised crosswalk, floors the car, gets to another raised crosswalk, goes over it, slams on their brake, goes over it, and then floors their car. And then my favorite, the one who comes down Winchester Street going forty miles an hour, flies over the raised crosswalk, bangs down in front of my house, and then speeds away. That didn't work. The neck downs reduced more parking on Winchester Street and make it really dangerous to take a right turn out of Fuller onto Winchester because you have to go into the oncoming lane in order to take the right turn. So here's my question. If we change the speed limits, what are you doing to Winchester Street?
Thank you. We'll take that as a rhetorical question. Ms. Antonin?
Jennifer Antonin, Precinct Two. I'm strongly in favor of both of these articles, but I'd like to pose Mr. Levitan's concern as a question, which is, will the town be increasing enforcement of the speed limit? And if so, do you expect ticket revenue to cover the cost?
Chief O'Leary?
Dan O'Leary, the Chief of Police. When we get a complaint on speed in a neighborhood, we have a procedure that we do to take a look at it. We don't flood an area with offices to determine whether or not there's a problem. We have a, uh, a, a couple of pipes that we lay across the street, rubber hoses. They will allow us to take the number of cars, the average speed of the cars, when they, and the, and what, whether there's, at, at what times this is, you know, they have, we get a high flow of traffic, and what times the violations occur. What we do after that, that takes it over like a two-week period, we average it out, we figure out if there is actually a problem of speed. If there's a problem of speed, we'll at least, we'll know the approximate times that the violations are occurring. We will concentrate our efforts to enforce on those during that time period and concentrate that, so we don't spend too much time in an area. Sometimes we find out that it's not a problem of speed exceeding the, whatever the, the speed limit is at the time, and it's something that the neighbors would prefer to have signs put up. And we work with neighborhoods on that. I'd say that you'll see a lot of that at first. I, I say, I, that, because one thing is we have limited resources in, to commit to a neighborhood for a certain period of time. But we have a, one of the, one of those machines that we can do it. I think the Transportation Board has, has five of them. And we work together to find out if what, what the complaints are valid and when we can have our best impact on them.
Thank you. Mr. Richmond?
Good evening. Clint Richmond, Precinct Six. Um, I'm not sure I'm going to vote on this, but I want to, I just want to point out that I feel like we're focusing on the worst-case scenario. Everyone wants to protect children, but schools are operating less than half the day, only five days a week for part of the year. Yet Article nineteen in particular will affect drivers twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days per year. Speed limits are a rather blunt instrument. Twenty mile an hour speed limits seem to me rather unrealistic, despite any enforcement that you might bring to bear on it. I'd like to see an analysis of speed by time of day, in particular, speed at night, when I think we can agree signs are not going to be the most effective instrument for managing speed. There's no mass transit after twelve-thirty a.m., so driving increases. I live on Washington Street. I've witnessed many accidents after this hour, some fatal. Some of these drivers are OUI. I don't think the speed limit is influencing them. Most importantly, I was wondering what the statistics are for pulling drivers over after eight p.m. and if there are increased racial disparities during these hours. I don't know if we have the, could answer that question, Mr. Moderator, but I'd be interested to see if anybody has a response. But in any case, if we don't have the information now, I would urge the Transportation Board to study this before they consider any changes. And I wish they presented this as part of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, are you going to ask anyone to see if they have any statistics on driving?
Do you have those statistics with the Transportation Board?
We, yeah, I don't have those statistics with me, but these are exactly the kinds of things you, when we cut, when, should this pass, that you, we'll, you'll come and discuss with us there. These are all totally reasonable points, which I look forward to discussing.
And, and does the Chief have any comment on pulling drivers over by hour of day or by daylight versus nighttime?
We have, we, when we track the violations that our offices write, they're tracked by platoons. So we could find out whether the violations are occurring day, evening, or late at night. I don't know the exact figures, but we do have them by platoons who would be able to tell what the figures are.
I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Miriam Ashkenazi, Precinct Thirteen, very first town meeting. A little nervous. So I, I am still ambivalent on how I will vote on these two warrant articles because I, I feel very strongly in agreement with what Mr. Fernandez has stated. And I have a question for clarification, and then I would actually like to hear from Chief O'Leary. My first question is, in the warrant article, it says that they could do street by street or, in fact, to implement townwide, twenty-five mile an hour. And Mr. Dempsey had implied that it would be townwide, but he also opened his statement by saying he was speaking for himself. So I would like to hear from the Transportation Board if that is indeed the plan to do a townwide rather than street by street. If that decision hasn't been made, what would influence that decision? Because that would certainly influence how I would feel about voting. And then my second question would be actually to ask-
Well, just let's, uh, let's have them one at a time, Mrs. Ashkenazi. I believe the Transportation Board hasn't, hasn't considered that issue because the, the law hasn't been passed yet. I mean, we haven't accepted the law yet. Is that correct? Mr. Corain?
Todd Corain, Transportation Administrator for the town of Brookline. That is correct, Mr. Moderator. The legislation in the state allows the Transportation Board, should this pass, to either do it, street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood, or townwide.
And do you know, yet, have you discussed it all yet?
No, it hasn't-
I've done a poll of members.
It hasn't been decided. And next question?
Um, the next question is for Chief O'Leary.
Well, the next question for me, I'll-
Sorry. The next question is that, um, I was hoping to hear from Chief O'Leary about, I have read the annual report, and certainly those statistics are, it's excellent that they are collected, and the information received on bias training in the Police Department two nights ago was also very helpful. I'm, I would like to hear a little bit more about specifics that might be implemented as this rolls forward and how that may, in fact, it, would there be extra eyes on this issue and what the plan would be to address it in interim if, in fact, we're seeing more people of color getting pulled over?
Well, that's, that, of course, is exactly what Mrs. Antonin asked, but why don't you try to supplement your earlier answer, Chief?
First of all, I, I think I, I'd like to explain, we've been keeping those statistics and releasing them publicly since nineteen ninety-seven. We took this on as a project for us and for the town because we knew that there was a lot of concern around disproportionate stops. And like it or not, Brookline was one of the towns that was front and center in the area on things like that. But I took a look at it when I became chief, as I, I know the community was surrounded three sides by the city of Boston. We know we have a very disparate population in Boston, Cambridge, uh, it's just over the water from us, and Newton is, is a city much like us but much larger. So we took it on as to how we were going to change the perception that people had. I had the opportunity to work with Marty Rosenthal to get, um, these stats passed. And we were the first state in, first in the state to put these stats forward, and we released them publicly since nineteen ninety-seven at six-month intervals. We've constantly looked at those numbers and what they mean. The problem that we have, or the difficulty that we have is what do we, what is the baseline? What do we compare them to? Do we compare them to our population? No, I don't think you can because there's no walls around Brookline keeping the residents in and the visitors out. So you have to take in your driving population. So you got to figure that out. Right now, probably about eight years ago, nine years ago, we participated in a, in a study of crashes with Northeastern. They sent out some students and they did windshield surveys. So they went to different intersections in town and broke down who they thought were driving by race and sex. We couldn't continue in that study because our crashes were so low, which was a good thing. We didn't have enough value to them. But we took the results of their windshield studies, and that's how we compared the work that our offices did. And we were right in line, almost to the percentage point. But that was eight years ago. We don't know where we stand now. The last time we looked at it, we compared our statistics that we stopped to the populations of Brookline, Boston, Cambridge, and Newton, based on their racial breakdowns. And from my take of looking at those numbers, I did not see that we were engaged in racial profiling with our two thousand and sixteen numbers. So I dispute what was said unless, and, but I'm, I'm a person that is open to discussion. I will listen to what somebody says, and if there's a better way to do it, because I'm not a mathematician, then I'm open to it. We would approach this whole thing the same way. We'll be, we have so much statistics, we'll be able to tell if we have an increase in, in certain kinds of violations, like speeding. But I have to tell you, right now, there are multiple speed zones all over the town, not just in schools. If you walk down Kent Street, it's twenty-five. You go, look down Newell Road, it's not posted, is that thirty? You go around Carlton Street, it's fifteen miles an hour. That's all in the same neighborhood. We don't get a lot of complaints that we're doing the wrong type of enforcement in those areas. When I said earlier about how we go about deciding where to assign our offices, there's a process to it. Because we don't want our officers just sitting there doing nothing, but by the same type token, we want them to have impact on the right problem. So there's ways we can look at it, and we can follow through. I'm smart enough to figure out all the debate that's going on, and there are ways that we can track it, and I don't mind tracking it. We can do it. We'll work with the Transportation Board to make sure it gets done.
Thank you.
Give it to Ms. Gilman.
Thank you. Jane Gilman, Precinct Three. Just an observation, when you enter our town, it's posted entering Brookline, also for the neighboring cities that Mr. Dempsey and others spoke to. It would be so easy to say, entering Brookline, speed limit twenty-five, and I would like to see the language added, strictly enforced. I speak to a uniform, uh, speed limit across town for some of the same reasons that our Winchester neighbors spoke to a few minutes ago. And Chief O'Leary just mentioned the change in speed limits in the same fifty feet, within fifty feet. I think it makes a lot of sense, and I like the idea, regionally, if you can take Cambridge, Somerville, Newton, so forth, as a region, of having a consistent policy about what we will tolerate in terms of speeding in our towns. I think it makes a lot of sense not to chop up our town or areas of our town with discriminating, with discriminate, with dis, with dis, distinct, uh, uh, speed limits, unless they were lowered around school zones, which I would favor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Levitan?
Yes, I have two questions, Mr. Moderator. One of, actually-
Who are you?
I'm Fred Levitan. Sorry, once again, Fred Levitan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Fourteen. I'm sorry, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Fourteen, Fred Levitan. I have a question that could be directed, as you wish, Mr. Moderator. I'm wondering if the Police Department or somebody can give us some data on pedestrian fatalities caused by motor vehicle accidents in the town over the last few years? And my second question is, I'd like Mr. Corain to comment on the information he gave to the Advisory Committee that this would be done townwide and that we would have speed limit signs not posted all over the town, but posted at the entrance to the town. He certainly gave us the impression that it would be done as a town and that the entire town, other than Route Nine, was thickly settled.
Do you have statistics on pedestrian fatalities in Brookline?
I, I don't have them off the top of my head. I, I know that we're fortunate that we do not have a lot of fatal accidents, whether it's automobile, bike. I think our last fatal accident was a bicyclist, unattended accident on Carlton Street.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Corain?
Todd Corain, Transportation Administrator. With respect to whether it be townwide or street by street or district by district, as mentioned by other speakers, I prefer a, a townwide because it is uniform, it is consistent with our neighbors in all of the directions, and it allows us to do something that the city of Boston actually is required now by Mass DOT, is if you do a statutory speed limit for, that's townwide, you post it at the borders. Uh, if you, anybody wants to see what it looks like, although they did it very poorly, in my opinion, if you go down Harvard Street, where you enter in Harvard Avenue, uh, at the Boston City Line, typically we put the signs at seven feet in the air, so they're very viewable. Theirs is about twenty-three feet in the air. I'm not sure why. Uh, but it says, thickly settled, speed limit twenty-five mile, twenty-five, citywide unless otherwise posted. Ours would be thickly settled, speed limit twenty-five, townwide unless otherwise posted. And this is the state standard that was assigned, that was created by Mass DOT for all communities that do that.
Thank you.
Now, this is a more question.
I'll take that motion for the question. Uh, I think we have had a full discussion of these articles and the issues they involve. Is there a second to the motion? All, uh, takes a two-thirds vote, all in favor of terminating debate. Well, before we take the vote, I have Ms. Fraley, Mr. Nanian, Ms. Connors, and Mr. Levy at the microphones. No one else in the, has signed up to speak, who hasn't speak. I'm sorry.
Expand your field, not comment.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. Okay. With that in mind, all those in favor of calling the question, terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the, we now proceed to vote on Article eighteen, the motion-
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I'd like to request an electronic vote.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Are there thirty-five Town Meeting Members who would like a? Okay. We'll have an electronic vote on, this is on the motion on page eighteen dash three to accept the provisions of Section seventeen C of Chapter Ninety of the General Laws. Uh, main motion, eighteen main motion. When are we ready? Okay. You can vote anytime. I remind you, press one if you're in favor of this motion, press two if you're against it, press three if you're abstaining. Motion carries by a vote of one hundred seventy-six in favor, eighteen opposed, and four abstentions. On the motion on, under Article nineteen, on page nineteen dash three, you want an electronic vote on that one, too, Mr. Carroll? Okay. If, are there thirty-four of your colleagues?
Thirty-four.
All right. We'll have an electronic vote. This is Article nineteen, main motion. Motion carries by a vote of 159 in favor, 28 opposed, and six abstentions. Article 21. Article, the motion is a resolution that starts in the bottom of page five of the pink supplement, over to page, middle of page seven. Moved by Mr. Christ, seconded by Mr. Luscoye, Resolution Regarding a Net-Zero Energy Ninth Elementary School and the Expansion of the High School. Mr. Christ, Loey, and Scanlon, Ms. Scanlon. Go ahead. Okay, we can remove the, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Warner Loey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. Last night, we heard how important local action on climate change is, and we voted to support the Paris Climate Agreement. This warrant article is an opportunity to put those words into action. When the ninth school is built, we want it to be a significant advance toward a net-zero energy building. That is, a building that is as energy efficient as is consistent with sound fiscal policy. Brookline is already doing well. The new Devotion School is an excellent building, but we can do more. To approach net zero, architects and engineers need ambitious but practical goals to design to. We have consulted with several architects, including the project architect, who is now working for the town, and my, my co-presenters are both architects. And what they all tell us is that to get close to net zero energy, our goal should be to have this school certified as a LEED Platinum Building. And that includes not just having it designed to LEED standards, but also certified. But at the same time, we want to be realistic, and with the full support of the Town Building Department, this resolution also sets conservative minimums that are only as high as what we've already achieved at the Devotion School. We're very confident that this can be done economically. Some energy efficiency technologies and features like solar panels do require significant capital outlays at the outset. But when we look at the full lifecycle costs and long-term savings and view these as long, as the long-term investments that they are, not to mention when we consider the environmental costs avoided, it would be fiscally irresponsible not to make these investments in a new building. This warrant article doesn't change the town design process, it doesn't interfere with the cost-benefit analysis that's part of that process, it doesn't tie us down to any particular design. What it does do is make a clear statement of what our community values are, and it says that the town, that town government is committed to leading by example with regard to climate change. Thank you. And with that, I will turn this over to Alan Christ for a description of what a net-zero
Hi, my name is Alan Christ, and I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct Four, as well as a member of the Green Caucus and EDAB. I would like to discuss the components of a net-zero building, as well as two New England schools that have made significant advances towards net zero. Next slide. Net-zero buildings include a variety of energy conservation measures. The primary components include a heavily insulated envelope, extensive sun shading, high-performance windows, and carefully considered matting with north and south-facing window openings. Next slide. Their mechanical systems often separate heating and cooling systems from ventilation and use geothermal or air-source heat pumps. Waste energy is reused to further increase efficiency while power generation systems such as solar PV are also often incorporated. Next slide. The slide above depicts in red the cost of two recent renovation projects at Devotion and Runkel relative to the cost of other green or net-zero projects in the Northeast. The light green bars represent LEED silver or gold, the medium green bars represent LEED platinum, and the dark green are net-zero site energy. While the cost of each performance level varies from project to project, the chart demonstrates that cost parity with standard construction in Brookline can be possible. While there's not yet a consensus regarding relative cost for net-zero projects, a recent national grid study noted that a school project can achieve 25% to 27% energy performance beyond the mask code with 10 to 12 energy conservation measures at an incremental cost of $6 per square foot. Next slide. The following slides describe the green components of two aspiring net-zero projects. The first is the Claiborne-Pell Elementary School in Newport, Rhode Island. The Pell School achieves $116,000 per year of energy savings at a cost of $265 per square foot, which is comparable to the 276 per square foot unit cost of the Runkel School renovation. Next slide. The Pell School includes envelope insulation exceeding code by 35%, daylight harvesting with an automated dimming system, light shelves at south-facing classrooms, LED lighting throughout, and a carefully considered solar orientation. Next slide. The second precedent is the MLK School in Cambridge. The 170,000-square-foot school is constructed for 420 square foot. This cost is similar to the 394 per square foot cost of the Devotion School renovation. Its energy use is 60% less than typical educational buildings in New England. Next slide. It incorporates substantial natural daylight in classrooms, high-performance wall assemblies, geothermal wells, rooftop PV, an automated dimmer system, and gray water storage and reuse. On the whole, these precedents show that it's possible to make a significant advance toward a net, towards net zero at a reasonable cost while maintaining an optimal educational environment.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Scanlon. I'm Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. I'm also an architect, and I worked on many K through 12 school modernization projects while I lived in Los Angeles. I'm the coordinator for Brookline Mothers Out Front, a volunteer organization committing to ensuring a livable future for our children in the face of climate change. Next slide, please. So why pursue a net-zero energy goal for Brookline? Next slide. First and foremost, we have a moral obligation to future generations to leave a livable planet. As this slide describes, there's a long list of reasons why we should implement this. But in addition, there's a new book, Climate of Hope, co-authored by New York City former Mayor Michael Bloomberg and Sierra Club's Executive Director Carl Pope. And they propose that local and state government, business, and individuals can turn the tide in the fight against climate change. Climate change may be the first global problem whose solution will depend on how municipal services such as energy, water, and transportation are delivered to citizens. Next slide. There are other benefits of a net-zero energy building that are less obvious. Working toward a net-zero ninth school is a natural next step in our town's commitment to addressing climate change. As you may know, in 2008, Town Meeting created the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee, which developed a comprehensive climate action plan to reduce our emissions and to consider climate change in our town decisions and planning. The Climate Action Plan sets a greenhouse gas reduction goal of 80% below our 1990 levels by 2050. But Brookline's emissions have been flat for the last several years. Business, as usual, will not allow us to meet our Climate Action Plan target by 2050. A net-zero ninth school puts teeth in this commitment. A net-zero goal will have a significant impact on our emissions because it begins to tackle the biggest source of those emissions, our buildings. It focuses us on the performance of our new school and getting the most value from our construction and operating dollars. Next slide, please. There are many other communities pursuing net zero as listed here on this slide. For Brookline, the most energy-efficient schools that are consistent with fiscal responsibility should be a community value held as deeply as any of our educational values. Bloomberg and Pope remind us in Climate of Hope that the single most important development in the fight against climate change is that local governments, CEOs, and investors look at climate change as a financial and economic issue, and that there are gains to be made and losses to avert by factoring climate change into the way they manage their cities, businesses, and funds. Next slide. So I'll end on this last slide. Somewhere in Brookline, there's a child being born today. Eighteen years from now, when she graduates from Brookline High School in the class of 2036, we should be able to look her in the eye and say, "We gave you the best education we could, and we also did everything we could to protect you from climate change." Please vote favorable action on the motion offered by the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call on Mr. Luscoye, I need to correct another electronic vote. This is on the item 67, Article Nine, the Baldwin School Vote. The corrected vote is 185 in favor, 32 against, and four abstentions.
Mr. Moderator, I'm David Luscoye, Precinct 11, speaking for the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action because this warrant article would set in motion the pursuit of net-zero principles, thereby aiming to decrease the carbon footprint of our schools as much as feasible, is consistent with town design processes, the role of the Board of Selectmen, the Building Commission, and the School Committee. Would not have any bearing on fiscal decisions requiring Town Meeting approval. And it is timely because in order for the most, for the most cost-effectively implementation of net-zero principles, environmental and sustainable goals should be incorporated into the planning at the beginning of the design process. The Advisory Committee voted 24 in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, to recommend favorable action on the Advisory Committee motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. And Mr. Vitolo, would you come forward, please?
Nancy Heller for Unanimous Board of Selectmen. Thanks first go to Warner Loey, Alan Christ, and Kathleen Scanlon for their hard, hard work on such an excellent proposal. We at the Climate Action Committee have heartily endorsed it and are very happy that this Town Meeting has now the right to consider this. We all know, given our current federal government, we at the local level have got to do as very much as we can to affect climate change, to reduce the use of fossil fuels, to increase the use of renewable energy. The climate deniers are in, are in charge at the federal level, but not here in Brookline. The fact is that we can turn our resources and our efforts to renewable sources of energy, adopt significant efficiencies in our construction practices, and because prices have come down a lot, we don't really need to affect the costs all that much. In addition, as the petitioners have pointed out, in the long run, the cost analysis is favorable because we reduce our energy costs so much and we save so much. Even the Runkel panels that I told you about earlier are going to save us $30,000 a year. That's significant money when you're considering what we're spending on, on items in our schools for, and $30,000 more for whatever, municipal services or education is a good deal. So please, please join the Unanimous Board of Selectmen in voting favorable action on this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitolo.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. The Edward Devotion Building Renovation Project is a great project, and when completed, Brookline will have built a really great, modern schoolhouse. One of the many achievements of the Devo project is its energy footprint. It's on track to get 13 LEED energy points, which means that it will use 32% less energy than minimum standards for a building of its size and use. It's a really solid achievement, and one for which we should be proud. All schools in Brookline are different in many ways. For example, each is sited in a different location, and those sites all have pros and cons. The Baldwin School will be a really great school. And under Article 21, it will have a really solid energy performance profile, at least as good as Devotion's. But with respect to energy use, Baldwin can be better than Devotion. With Baldwin, we're starting the process of outstanding energy performance sooner and with clearer expectations. Our staff and our committee members both have a few more years of experience with high-performing schools than when we started the Devotion project. With respect to outperforming Devotion on energy use, we can do it. Baldwin's siting means that more cars and buses will go to and from Baldwin every day than does Devo. In order to balance that unfortunate reality, it is imperative that with respect to energy consumption on-site, Baldwin perform better than Devotion. We should do it. Warrant Article 21 is all about high energy performance, consistent with fiscal responsibility, and it calls for Baldwin to be no worse than Devotion. And as I've said, that's nothing to be ashamed of. Still, in the past few years, we've come to learn even more about climate change, even more about our town's stretched operating budget, and have had a stark lesson in how our federal government's environmental policy can swing wildly. On Tuesday, the moderator asked that we not applaud a member mid-speech, and so I ask that you continue holding your applause until the end. I also ask Mr. Pollock, Mr. Waschinsky, and all other committee members, town staff, and hired professionals involved with the Baldwin project, to listen closely to the applause at the end of my comments. The more wild that applause, the more in agreement this Town Meeting is with the idea that while merely doing as well as Devotion would comply with this resolution, we urge you to make sure that Baldwin has even better energy performance than Devotion. Colleagues, please vote yes on warrant Article 21, and please don't signal your enthusiasm for exceeding Devotion's 13 LEED energy points with your applause until the end.
Ms. Stanford, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Scott Englander, Precinct Six, Member of the Green Caucus, and after that last talk, you know by now that I'm kind of nerdy. I've worked in the energy sector my entire career, and I began it by designing energy-efficient buildings and innovations in HVAC control, and designing commercial and industrial energy efficiency programs for a major utility. Today, I advise project developers, investors, utilities, governments, and end-users on the economics of large, clean energy and renewable energy investments, as well as energy procurement. The school facility we're about to design and build, as well as any other new town facilities we build, will last for many decades. we build, will last for many decades. The points I’m going to make here have to do with the long-term nature and the impact of these investments. There are many features of a net-zero facility that, if included early enough in the design process, will add little or nothing to the capital cost, and there’s no reason not to include them. With some energy fee, energy efficiency features, however, there’s often a trade-off between capital cost and operating cost. A feature might typically have a higher capital cost than the more conventional alternative, but result in a lower operating cost due to reduced energy consumption. Over the facility’s lifetime, the total of the capital and the operating cost will be less than that of the conventional alternative. You spend more upfront, but less in total over time. Project developers and investors in my world normally make financial decisions on long-term investments like this by looking at the internal rate of return, or the net present value, or the levelized cost of energy, all metrics that are calculated using a discounted cash-flow analysis incorporating projected energy prices and the cost of capital. These metrics allow the comparison of alternative designs that might have very different capital and operating cost profiles. This is the sort of analysis the town should be using to make decisions about its long-term investments in buildings. For the town to make investments and build, make investment decisions on some other basis, for example, simply relying on a simple payback period with no further analysis, or choose alternatives that have a less favorable net present value, could be considered fiscally Another factor to consider is hedge value. Capital costs are fixed and known in advance, whereas the energy prices that will determine future energy costs are uncertain and volatile. Therefore, another benefit of energy-efficient designs is that they shift operating costs to capital costs, and they allow the town to lock in a larger portion of the total cost, exposing the town to less financial risk going forward. This is thoughtful fiscal planning, and future town meeting members will thank you for making their job easier. Finally, I want to remind you that while policy and regulations can always change, the greenhouse gas emissions associated with the schools and any other facilities we’re investing in now will become baked into the town’s emissions profile for decades to come, with little recourse. Those ongoing emissions will continue to be part of the legacy that we leave future As climate policy at the national level moves in the wrong direction, tangible steps at the local level are an even greater imperative. Article Twenty-One, in its current form, it could be argued, does not go far enough in this regard.
One minute.
But it’s a step in the direction of a more sustainable legacy. I urge you to vote in favor of Article Twenty-One. Additionally, as the town moves to evaluate energy efficiency design features needed to achieve environmentally sustainable facilities, I would urge the adoption of a discounted cash-flow approach that allows capital costs and operating costs to be compared on a level footing. Thank you.
Right, there’s a motion for the question. I have, nobody signed up to speak against this article. I have Ms. Stamfer and Mr. Ananian signed up to speak in favor, and there’s gentlemen at the microphone, undoubtedly also in favor. But I’ll entertain a question, a motion for the question. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing debate, raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the motion on page, pages five through seven of the pink supplement, yes, Ms. LeBlanc?
Precinct Six, may we have a recorded vote, please?
There are thirty-five town meeting members who’d like a recorded vote. We’ll have one. There are. This is main motion, Article Twenty-One. Fire when ready. Motion carries by a vote of one hundred and eighty-three in favor, zero against, and six abstentions. We now proceed to Article Twenty-Two, and I think there are a number of people in the television audience who are interested in being present for the special town meeting article on impeachment. We’ll reach that in probably half an hour. The resolution under Article Twenty-Two is on pages twenty-two dash six to seven, moved by Ms. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Green, resolution to support the town of Brookline to participate in the Government Alliance on Race and Equality, AKA GARE. Ms. Greenwald?
Good evening. My name is Ann Greenwald, and I’ve lived in Brookline for thirty-six years. I’m one of the three citizen petitioners for Article Twenty-Two. This is my first time submitting a warrant article, and it’s been quite an interesting learning experience. Warrant Article Twenty-Two is simply stated, asking town meeting to urge the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, and department heads to fully commit to carrying out the work of achieving racial equity in Brookline via the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, known as GARE. Brookline already joined GARE in March of 2017, and by doing so has undertaken an important first step in moving us towards racial equity. Here’s the context of how we came to submit Article Twenty-Two. For the past year or so, a coalition of Brookline residents have been thinking together about how to address racial inequity in Brookline. We started with the understanding that racism is structural and deeply embedded in the institutions of this country. In order to reverse centuries of institutional racism, we need to figure out how to create long-lasting structural change. This is not a quick fix, and will take a lot of work and commitment. As a white person, I had to decide to take on racism. I had to gain understanding that the hurts of racism affect everyone negatively, albeit very differently, and that no one can truly live a good life when others are oppressed. I made a personal commitment that I would never look away again. We all have personal work to do to challenge our conditioning and preconceived notions about race, but this personal work is not enough to end racial inequities. This is why we must also address institutional racism. When we look at structural racism, we know that it’s not about individual blame or bad or racist people. It’s about the structures of our institutions. I’m here tonight because we have a real opportunity in Brookline to help dismantle structural racism and replace it with racial justice. A year ago, the city of Boston held a race summit to announce that they had become the first city in New England to join GARE, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. Our coalition attended the summit to learn more about GARE and how it could help us in Brookline. Several town department heads were also there in attendance. What we learned was that GARE is a network of longtime organizers and policy experts led primarily by people of color with deep roots working against racism, who are now using their skills to partner at the government level. Their mission is to create a national network of local governments working to achieve racial equity and advance opportunity for all. Racial equity is defined by GARE as when race is no longer used as an indicator of life outcomes, and outcomes are improved for all. The GARE process uses a variety of tools to examine government policies, programs, and decisions through a lens of racial equity. GARE is about looking at what’s right in front of you through a racial equity lens and seeing things in a different light. The goal is to create changes that improve outcomes for people of color and for the entire community. The idea is that racial equity is integrated into all the work we do as a town. After the summit, we were convinced that GARE could be a meaningful tool for Brookline, so we got to work getting the word out. We organized community meetings, we talked to people in GARE cities across the country, and there are thirty-three regions where GARE is being implemented, with about a hundred cities and towns total at this point. We learned that GARE can be a powerful tool when used in a meaningful, collaborative, and accountable way. Brookline became the first town to join Boston to begin to form a cohort in New England of GARE. Rather than letting this important milestone fly under the radar, we submitted the warrant article to shine light on this important work. We want the Brookline community to know about it and to participate in GARE along with the town leadership and its employees. A testament to community support for GARE is the petition we circulated, which now has close to five hundred signatures. The financial implications for the town are that annual membership to GARE will cost $3,000 a year. This has already been included in the Office of Diversity and Inclusion and Community Relations budget. In the first year, up to $10,000 could be spent for workshops and training specifically for department heads. Trainings will train the trainers, provide technical assistance, and address the challenges we may encounter. Trainings for the town employees would occur during worktime and would not incur additional expense. So in closing, I want to say that I’ve been heartened by the tremendous enthusiasm I have encountered from Brookline, taking steps towards addressing structural racism in our town. Just submitting the warrant article is already creating important discussion. There is much work ahead of us. By willingly taking this step, we are acknowledging that racial justice work will benefit all of us in the Brookline community. For this reason, I’m asking town meeting to show a strong endorsement of GARE and vote favorable action on Article Twenty-Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carroll and Mr. Conquest, if you’re in the auditorium, please come forward and sit in the front row. I don’t see you out there. Oh, there you are.
Carol Carroll, Precinct Member from Precinct Ten, and speaking for the advisory committee. Ms., Ms., Ms. Greenwald has done an excellent job presenting her, her warrant article, and the other two petitioners who are here, Steve Vogel and, and Abigail Ortiz, have also did a great job of presenting to the advisory committee when they came to speak with us. GARE is, is, I wanted to just comment on a couple of things because I think that they did a great job in their presentation. And one is that GARE is a joint effort of the Center for Social Inclusion based in New York City and the Haas Institute for Fair and Inclusive Society at UC Berkeley. Both are nonprofit with a mission to work for achieving racial equity and creating equitable outcomes for all. Ann mentioned that the, the number seems to be growing of, of participants. My last count was lower than yours, Ann, so I won’t even repeat mine. GARE has seven paid staff members who support the efforts of members of, of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. Brookline has already been assigned their sports, their staff member, and have begun working with her. The workshops are designed for the needs of the members. Most likely, the first workshop for Brookline, as Ann mentioned, will be training sessions for department heads. Besides workshops, GARE provides racial equity tools that are designed to integrate explicit consideration of racial equity in decisions, including policies, practices, programs, and budgets. It is both a product and a process. Use of the racial equity tools can help to develop strategies and actions that reduce racial inequities and improve, and improve success for all groups. The petitioners are urging town meeting to support and encourage town government and to make a maximum use of the training and tools available through its membership in GARE. Further, petitioners are urging, the petitioners are urging the town to join with other towns and cities that are members of GARE to work for racial equity. The advisory committee voted twenty-five, zero, zero to support for a favorable action, and we encourage you all to vote favorable action on Article Twenty-Two.
Thank you. Mr. Conquest?
This okay? Arthur Conquest, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Warrant Article Twenty-Two and the proposal to bring GARE to Brookline is slick substitute. How much longer is the town of Brookline going to continue to exploit, dupe, and use Black people, especially Black and Latino children? Let me refresh your collective memories. When the first, when the former white director of the old Human Relations Youth Resource Commission retired a few years back, and Mariela Ames became the first Latino, Latina Chair of the Commission of Brookline, and Dr. Lloyd Jelenow became the head of that department, the Board of Selectmen created the Committee on Diversity, Equal Employment, Opportunities, and Affirmative Action, which cunningly emasculated the commission of the vast majority of its powers, rendering it impotent. And after changing its name to the Diversity, Inclusion, and Human Relations Commission, town meeting paved the way for, for Mr. Jelenow to become its first director with absolutely no power. Last year, the Twenty-First Century Fund at Brookline High School hosted a three-part forum workshop panel discussion on race. At the Fourth of April session held in the Slunch Gym, it was titled, quote, “Race and Community: Seeing the World Through a Different Lens,” unquote. The hundred-odd participants, including the Board of Selectmen, the town manager and his assistants, the school committee, the public housing authority, the vast majority of the department heads, town meeting members, and members of the Diversity, Inclusion Commission, and community activists like myself and the moderator. We played musical chairs at maybe twenty different tables for almost an hour and a half, and during each exchange, there was a recorder who kept notes. At the conclusion of that gathering, participants were told there would be a report forthcoming summarizing the statements concerning race in the community that were being, being made during the discussion, which participants took part in at the tables they rotated through. Sadly, a year later, and not a single peep from the Twenty-First Century Fund. Last spring, Ruth Ann Schneider, Merrill Lisa, and myself, I was the invisible participant, filed a resolution at town meeting, which passed overwhelmingly, that supposedly will increase the number of Black, Latino, and people of color in the town’s workforce. “How may, how many,” I asked, “have, has that initiative created and produced?” Last summer, the Director of the Workman Circle, Ann Abby Erdman, a former school, within the school teacher at Brookline High School, came to be, came to me and asked if I wanted to help them implement the GARE initiative because they wanted to address and solve the problem of racism in Brookline. Neither of these two women reside in Brookline, by the way, but they took the name of their organization, the organization they formed, as Brookline for Racial Justice and Equality. In the final analysis, after all the planning and organization was done, what they really wanted for me was to be their house Negro, as in-
You have one minute, Mr. Conquest.
Thank you. I was not their equal, and as an inferior being, I was needed to do as I was told. Until the white power structure in Brookline admits that the problem of racism is deeply embedded in this community, the GARE initiative put forth is going to evolve the same way all of the other initiatives that have surfaced over the past decade since I've been involved in community activities and events encompassing the dissolution of racism in the town of Brookline. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Bernard Green for the Board of Selectmen. Let me start out by saying that racism and other forms of harassment and et cetera are common throughout this country and throughout the world. Our job is not to freak out about it, but to systematically work to address it, recognizing that we will not do it tomorrow, rather, we will do it when we finish doing it. So with that background, let me talk about Warren Article Twenty-two. It's a resolution that urges the town to increase its participation in the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, or GARE, easier to say that, which is a nonprofit organization that brings governmental entities into alliances to address racial equity issues. The town, through the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, has already become a so-called core member of GARE. Core members are those jurisdictions that have made a commitment, first step, to advancing racial equity across the breadth and depth of their jurisdictions. That is to say, in Brookline, all town departments and from frontline employees to elected officials and appointed officials. The town's proposed increased participation... We're already a core member, and the resolution is talking about increasing the participation, as I understand it. Would take the form of one or more departments other than Dr. Jellinou's Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, participating in GARE's implementation process. That is to say, implementing racial equity actions that are identified through a process of workshops, discussions, and application of so-called racial equity tools. It would also include providing financial support and other resources for a successful implementation process and community participation and discussions. You may ask, as I have, what does GARE do? I think the answer is it encourages governments to make a commitment to racial equity, taking that, what I consider, the first step by explicitly using considerations of racial equity in creating and evaluating policies, procedures, budgeting, other matters. GARE provides assistance with racial equity training, communication, coaching, and skill building, and assistance with particular topic areas. It uses what they call racial equity tools to guide this process. And I say what they call because a lot of this is very academic, and I'm not an academic. So it's important for me to sort of go through the sort of nitty-gritty details in terms of what it is we're talking about because it can be seen as just a bunch of talk. And, you know, we get a lot of talk here in Brookline especially. So let's try to get down and figure out, you know, what specifically are we talking about? To say we're against, you know, racial bias, I mean, is sort of irrelevant. Everyone's against that unless they're, you know, on another side of things. So the question I have is what is a racial equity tool? Like I said, that's sort of an academic idea, and it's, you know, I'm sure most people couldn't tell you what that means. I mean, is it a hammer? Is it a screwdriver? Well, I think the answer to that question is it's a set of questions that help to flush out details of a proposed action so that the racial equity piece of it, or implications, can be identified. For example, questions such as, "What are you proposing?" "What are the details of, for example, your budget proposal?" "What are the details of a procurement policy?"
You have one minute.
I have one minute?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay. Okay, blah, 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 blah. Ask... Et cetera. It'll also ask the question, and this is relevant to an earlier discussion, "Who will benefit and who will be burdened by the proposed action?" And that was raised in connection with the traffic calming issue of Warren Articles Eighteen and Nineteen. Presumably, we would also look at the impact, not just on racial equity, but on other factors such as safety. So it's not... I mean, to talk about as a racial equity tool is a little misleading because it's much broader than that. In fact, although the focus is racial equity, GARE, as I understand, seeks to identify and implement changes that will have benefits for the entire community, especially other groups... I'm talking...
Ding!
...moderator. Especially other groups than racial groups that are marginalized. The process of looking at these issues from a racial equity standpoint, that process will help us look at other often overlooked issues that will impact, for example, the elderly, the disabled, immigrant community, and other marginalized groups. Be real quick. Petitioners believe that the town's ability to achieve its goals of promoting racial justice will be enhanced by participating in GARE. The Board of Selectmen agrees. And by a vote of five to zero, the Selectmen on May nine voted in favor of Warren Article Twenty-two, as amended by the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you. Marty Rosenthal, Precinct Nine, Co-Chair of Brookline PACS. So I support this with enthusiasm. I was very pleased to be among, it seemed like, at least a hundred people at Workman's Circle that were working on... started on this months ago and have a slight say among all those people into the makings of this article and, among other things, adding the school and school superintendent to the article, which I'm very pleased was done. And I hope that Town Meeting will overwhelmingly vote for it. And I want to add a couple of words, sort of of caution. As has been mentioned, these issues are universal in the United States. They may be universal in the world, although I don't get out of the United States too much. But from what I read in the papers, they're going on everywhere. And they may never go away, unfortunately. Race and what we did, what our undocumented forefathers did to the Native Americans are the two original sins of this country. And they're still with us, and we are still paying the price for what the price that we put on the victims for those centuries. And we've worked on them in Brookline. I've worked on them very hard. We have to keep working on them. They are not going to go away. The speakers have talked about institutional racism in Brookline. Of course, we have it. We have racists in this room. We have people with racist thoughts in this room. We have people who've done racist things in this room. I myself have probably... I know I've had racist thoughts. Maybe I've done racist things. Does that make me a racist? What I want to urge is that the way for us to make Brookline better in this regard is to work towards solutions and be careful in what we say. And there's some examples that I want to talk about. We've had people talking about pervasive racism in the police department. What does pervasive mean? Does it mean everybody is a racist? Does it mean the whole department is racist? I urge caution about using language like that and thinking about language like that when you hear it. The Diversity Commission, on January fourth, I happened to be sitting there in 2016, off the top of somebody's head. There's a wonderful person and another lawyer, like the first person, using pervasive racism, talked about the Selectmen allowing a culture of institutional racism. It was language that went viral and is being used in federal court in a case, even though the Diversity Commission later clarified it and said they did no investigation and made no findings. But the federal court lawyer who's using it doesn't say that. He's never corrected it in his pleadings in federal court. So I'm urging that we work together and not work against each other and have... We need to be vigilant. We need constructive criticism, but not reckless criticism. The ACLU has a slogan, "Eternal vigilance is the price of liberty." And I would add to that, that it takes a village to be vigilant. And the C in village is for community. Let's work for this community to be vigilant on these issues. We have to keep doing it. I've done it for four decades. I don't know if I'll be able to do it for four more decades, but I'll do it for as many more decades as I have, and I hope you all will too. And I commend the petitioners again.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel.
Hi. Hi, I'm Steve Vogel. I'm one of the co-petitioners, and I'm a resident of Precinct Five, not a Town Meeting member, and have been a resident close to forty years. And as we all know, Brookline has joined... Already joined GARE, which then has raised for a number of people, "Why are we doing this still?" And there's a number of reasons and why it's important. One, as it's already been acknowledged, there is always institutional resistance to change. Actually, that wasn't acknowledged, but I'm acknowledging it now. Conversations about race are always uncomfortable. White people get guilty. They're guilty. They get angry. Black people get angry when white people feel guilty, when they say things they shouldn't say. Makes everything difficult. Racial bias, which is often unconscious, places barriers to change. Given continued racial disparities in our country, wealth, income, housing, education, and health outcomes, even race-neutral policies, which most governments tend to have, basically reinforce those very disparities that possibly some of them were created to try and get rid of. GARE offers Brookline tools to help overcome barriers to change. We are looking for a resounding yes vote tonight. It sends a message to our town leaders and the rest of the Brookline community that we need to make changes now, that we expect our leadership not just to say supportive words, but actually to lead, to engage with town departments, to communicate expectations and hold people accountable. Success will require that town government engage with the community at large and in particular, communities of color who have been affected in Brookline. They need to be... Issues have to be prioritized. Programmatic changes have to be consulted, and feedback has to be a continuous loop with people in the community and people of color in this community. We, who are working on this, are cautiously optimistic that we can do important work in Brookline. But it's going to require the community and the support of Town Meeting to do this, and we invite you all to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Summer Rivera. Did I get that right?
My name is Vishni Summer Rivera, and I've attended Baker School for eight years. Now I'm a sophomore here at BHS. This past year, I co-founded a committee called SER, Students Against Institutional Racism, with my close friend Ben Haber. This year, we have worked on our history curriculums throughout the high school and the elementary schools to include people of color's perspective in our history because history isn't... Shouldn't be told just by a white man's perspective. We attended a meeting at Workman's Circle this past March, and we were blown away with the presentation that Simron Noor, the Vice President for Policy and Programs at the Center for Social Inclusion, gave about GARE and the progress it would advance Brookline with. Living in a town that has the opportunity to be a GARE town and the privileges of using the racial equity tools is truly amazing. When students see that our town is using GARE's model to end institutional racism and work towards racial equity, it sets a model and inspires the youth here in Brookline. I know that the work GARE does truly inspires me and Ben and the rest of our community with SER. As a student and activist against racism, it is a great step forward for Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. All right. Ms. Motner?
Good evening. Rebecca Ploutmauner, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eleven, speaking to urge you to vote to support Warren Article Twenty-two and, more importantly, to dig into the work that this Warren article will require from all of us going forward. It is a great step that the town of Brookline, through the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, has joined the National Network of GARE. The premise of GARE is that, despite everyone's best intentions, we sometimes adopt and/or enforce policies that burden people of color. GARE means... Participating in GARE means developing new practices and ways of assessing and analyzing Warren Articles, bylaws, and other town policies. By being part of this national network, we will get to benefit from some of the strategies and tools that other municipalities and county governments have used around the country, but we will have to develop things that work best for us here in Brookline. The questions that Mr. Fernandez raised about Articles Eighteen and Nineteen are an example of how this process will work. But hopefully, in the future, as a GARE community, these questions will be raised and addressed earlier in the consideration of any Warren article. I was very heartened by the Transportation Board's enthusiastic embrace of the issues Mr. Fernandez raised and hope that other town boards and departments will follow their lead. I'm excited about GARE because I know my colleagues in Brookline government share my commitment to ending racism and unintended racism in our town's policies and operations. I am thrilled that we are beginning the process of creating a framework to identify and prevent unintended racial bias from our policies and procedures. I look forward to doing that work with our elected officials, citizens, and the staff of the town of Brookline. Please join me in supporting Warren Article Twenty-two and, more importantly, in digging into the work that lies ahead. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Hello, everyone. Donnell O'Neill, Senior, from Brookline Mass. I lived here my whole life, almost forty years. I'm in support of the article. I had questions like Arthur, and like Bernard said, you know, it's a beginning. It's steps, 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 steps. Racism is not going to end overnight. Equality. It's all about steps. You know, if race and equal opportunity start to happen in Brookline, we won't get embarrassed so much. We won't be on the news for the police and the fire. It would start a process of peace. Okay? There's no racism. There's equal opportunity. No one can complain. There's no issues. There's no grievances. Okay? It's that simple, people. Let's start the peace process, okay? I just want to leave something with you. It's called "Let There Be Peace on Earth." This is an old song. This is what I want to do. This is what I want to do.
Mr. Harris?
John Harris, Precinct Eight. While obviously I'm, I'm supportive of the objectives and the intent of this article, I, I just want to point out, oh, I'm sorry, I do want to point out that, that while I'm supportive of the objectives and the intent of this article, I do want to point out that the specific approach of the article is to advocate for a particular training program organized by a particular nonprofit consulting group. And I just, having worked in human service programs for most of my working life, what I found is that what was a state-of-the-art program run by very energetic and talented people one year, several years later got kind of tired and thoughts had moved on, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it happens, happens often in institutions. I would contrast, for example, the U.S. Constitution, which is still viable, albeit, you know, many years later, albeit with amendments, versus, on the other hand, Esperanto, which was considered state-of-the-art at one point, and people have moved on. And I just, I don't know if this is a question or a comment or what, but I would hope that there would be an understanding in this, that if the, obviously, by all accounts, very talented and bright people who are running the GARE program and have designed the GARE program, if those people move on or retire or whatever, and if the ideas just, if the thought moves, if, if the, the field moves on, if we have an understanding that we have kind of not locked in Brookline to membership for whatever, till the end of time or whatever, so.
Mr. Fernandez.
Bernard Green, Board of Selectmen. Mr. Moderator, if I had a little more time when I gave my original presentation, I would have said this, in response to Mr. Harris's question. But first, let me note that Donnell's song, "Let There Be Peace on Earth," is very appropriate to, to this, this question. I mean, the first couple of lines are, "Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me." So, I mean, it's, thank you for presenting that song. It's very apropos to the, relevant to the discussion. So the Board of Selectmen, in reviewing this Warren article, noted that the Advisory Committee had added a requirement that the town's Chief Diversity Officer report on GARE's progress in the Commissions, Diversity, Inclusion, Community Relations Commissions' monthly meetings, and in a comprehensive annual report to the Selectmen. That also means, and should, should mean, I interpret it to mean, that the Chief Diversity Officer will also include an evaluation of the benefits of the program over time that the town is receiving from participating in, in GARE. So I think that that's responsive to the question.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Raul Fernandez, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. I plan to fully support and vote in favor of this motion. I urge you to do so as well. Yes. And let me tell you a couple of things, please. First of all, I received some fantastic stats. I asked earlier this week from Director Gileno and received some stats on our committees and commissions, and the makeup of those committees and commissions. I want to say briefly, before I get into that, I want to thank, I've, I've reached out over the course of the last week to a number of folks that work in town governance, either that are paid by the town or volunteers, who spend tremendous amounts of time working for the town, and the responses that I got, and how quickly I got those really thorough responses, from Selectmen Franco, from, from Town Clerk Ward, from the Diversity Commission, from Mr. Kletter as well, and from others. Thank you so much, Chief O'Leary and others, for your tremendous responsiveness. I think it speaks highly to how much people care about this town and about Town Meeting in particular. I want to, I want to say that among the statistics that I got, I asked about sort of diversity in committees and commissions. And as you all know, these are, these are by and large volunteer positions. There are 673 seats on our committees and commissions, and I asked about diversity statistics. Of those 673 seats, 31, this is 2015, this is the earliest data that we have, 31 were held by Asian Pacific Islanders, 19 by African Americans, and three by Latinos. Out of 673 committee and commission seats, three were held by people that were Latino or Latina, and 620 were held by good white folks. And so one of the things I want to really bring attention to here, and this is not to embarrass the town, it's really to, to, I think widen the scope of what we're talking about when we're talking about GARE. We pride ourselves on being a town that is primarily volunteer-citizen-run, with, with the help of some great people that are, that are public officials who work for the town as well. This leads me to my question, which is, will GARE extend beyond paid employees of the town to those of us who are, are volunteers, either as town meeting members, as, as commission or committee members, advisory boards, et cetera? What is the extent of GARE, and if it is not currently planned to extend that far, can it?
Thank you. Mr. Levy?
My name is Mark.
I was hoping for a response to that. Sorry, I don't, I don't know who the appropriate person, Mr. Moderator, is to respond to that, but.
Lloyd Gileno, Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. The answer is community-wide. It's one of the things, actually, what you pointed out is one of the things we want to look at, including more citizen participation in the government processes.
Thank you. Fully support that.
Thank you, Mr. Levy.
Thank you.
You may be the sunset speaker here.
Well, I'll, I'll ride my horse off and kiss the horse and say goodbye to the girl. The important thing to, I, I want to say is that.
Well, you better, you better tell us your name.
I'm sorry, Mark Levy, Precinct Seven. The important thing I want to say is that this could be, this article could be feel-good legislation, where we all feel better because we've done something, and that's, we all go home and we're all happy. I'd rather see this as feel-bad legislation. Legislation that admits there's a problem, that there needs to be action taken, that saying good things is not enough, that getting statistics and measurements are important, making progress on those statistics is important, and that the responsibility does not end with one person in the town, the head of the Diversity Department, does not even end with the Board of Selectmen, though certainly that's one of the places it begins, does not end with the town administrator, though he is certainly a key figure in anything that happens, but it begins with all of us feeling bad about ourselves. The fact that Brook, that Massachusetts and the United States have racism in them is no excuse for Brookline to have only an equal level of racism. That's not good enough. I think the important thing for us to do is to remember that we have to do better than we're doing now, and we can be an example to others, to other communities by going a little further, working a little harder, being a little more serious, and if that's the spirit in which this proposal is being offered, then I certainly support it fully. If it's to go home and feel good because we passed something, then I think we've missed a great opportunity. Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's the former, Mr. Levy. On the motion on Pages Six and Seven, 22 dash six to seven, those in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously. Now, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of the agenda for the annual Town Meeting. We have a special Town Meeting to go, and what I will do is call for a motion to dissolve the annual Town Meeting, after which I will convene the first special Town Meeting. So on, I need a motion to dissolve the annual Town Meeting. Second, those in favor of dissolving the annual Town Meeting, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. I now convene the first special Town Meeting. We have one article. It is, appears in the rose-colored supplement, Pages Three to Five, "Resolution in Support of a Congressional Investigation Regarding the Impeachment of President You-Know-Who." Moved by Mr. Sandman, seconded by Ms. Heller. I call on Ms. Burnsweil.
Should I start? Should I start? Yeah, yeah. Okay. My name's Alex Burnsweil. I live in Precinct Three, and I'm Sewal Ave, and my co-petitioner, Lisa Kaleric, who lives on Dwight Street in Precinct Eight, wasn't able to be here tonight. Her daughter is graduating from college. If you're here to support the resolution on impeachment, please stand.
Beg your pardon?
And that includes Town Meeting members, I guess. Thank you very much. The 429 petitioners that Lisa and I represent did not ask for this special Town Meeting and bring this resolution before you to obstruct a president we find distasteful. If it were only a matter of personality, politics, and policies, we would stick to opposing him in the political realm. Our concerns go much deeper. We bring this resolution for one reason and one reason only: Our president is violating the Constitution, and Congress is not doing its job of enforcing it. We want Brookline to call on Congress, and specifically, our member of Congress, to, to begin an investigation to determine if there are grounds for impeachment of the president, specifically whether he has violated the Emoluments Clause of the Constitution. Given the events of last week, though, I want to call your attention to the end of the first resolved clause, which directs the House Committee of the Judiciary, a quote, judiciary quote, "to investigate whether sufficient grounds exist for the impeachment of Donald J. Trump, including but not limited to the violations listed herein." The president's recent flurry of activity, apparently directed at obstructing the FBI investigation, is yet another dangerous manifestation of his unwillingness or inability to comply with the Constitution and the rule of law. Whether or not the other investigations going on in Congress now, or the FBI, show that he has obstructed justice, we believe that it's important to pursue these violations of the Emoluments Clause as a matter of precedent, to make it clear that no president may violate the Constitution with impunity. As you will have learned through reading the resolution, the Emoluments Clause of the Constitution were developed by the founders to prevent, to prevent an office holder, especially the president, from personally profiting from his office or from being influenced by personal financial interest. What we have is a president who appears to be doing both. Think about the Dakota Access Pipeline. Trump owns an interest in the parent company of the pipeline developer. As soon as he got into office, he reversed the decision of the Army Corps of Engineers and restarted work on the pipeline. Think of Trump Tower, whose largest tenant is the state-owned commercial and industrial bank of China. That same bank is a major lender to the Trump Organization. Thus, he receives both rent and credit from this entity owned by the Chinese government. Think of all of his golf courses, hotels, condo developments, and all the permits they need to build and operate around the country and around the world. Think of all the regulations that affect them. How can we be sure that the Trump administration's policies aren't influenced by the Trump Organization's bottom line? How can we be sure state and foreign governments won't curry favor with the president through friendly regulation and expedited permits? There are indications that this is already happening. The president's violations are not minor encroachments, they're not small details. They go to the heart of the intentions of the founders of our country, to establish a government by the people, of the people, by the people, and for the people. They were trying to create something different from the European monarchies of their time, in which the powerful at all levels sought to enrich themselves at the expense of their people. In fact, the drafters of the Constitution specifically identified violations of the Emoluments Clause, both clauses as impeachable offenses. The question before us tonight is really very simple: Do we want to live in a constitutional democracy or not? If we don't stand up for the Constitution, the social contract is broken. If we allow the President of the United States to violate the Constitution, that Constitution means nothing. It's only relevant if it's enforced. We must not accept this level of corruption as business as usual. This is not a partisan issue. It's not about Donald Trump's qualifications or his policies. It's about ensuring the continuation of a democracy based on the Constitution. It's about upholding the rule of law. If Donald Trump is not held accountable, we reverse the longstanding principle that no person is above the law. You might ask why the Town of Brookline should pass this resolution, given that we don't have jurisdiction in the matter. If Congress won't do their job and enforce the Constitution, then it's up to us as citizens. It's up to us as the cities and towns, as institutions of government, like Town Meeting, that are closest to the people, to demand that the Constitution be enforced. Towns frequently petition their members of Congress to act in their interests. It is in Brookline's interest to have a federal government that operates with integrity and a president who respects the rule of law. It's not in the town's interest to have a corrupt government that serves the private interests of the president. If you're concerned about repercussions to our town if we pass this resolution, I ask you instead to think about consequences. What will happen if we don't enforce the Constitution? How will future generations look at our actions at this critical moment when a president willfully and openly violates the Constitution, the founding document of our republic? Thank you very much. I urge you to vote yes on the resolution.
Now, I've permitted Ms. Burnsweil, as the principal petitioner, to exceed our five-minute time limit, but on the theory that she may not have realized that that existed. However, the rest of you are all longtime Town Meeting members, and I will ask you to limit your remarks to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm duly warned. Mike Sandman, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Three, speaking to the Advisory Committee as soon as this loads. There we go. Article One calls for our congressman to ask the House Judiciary Committee to investigate whether President Trump should be impeached. Impeachment 101, for those of you who don't remember your civics class, during impeachment, the House Judiciary Committee is in effect a prosecutor. If articles of impeachment are approved, the 435 House members act as the grand jury, and if they vote favorably, the articles are sent to the Senate, which becomes effectively the trial jury, and a two-thirds vote is required to convict. Next slide, please. There are three precedents. In 1868, Andrew Johnson fired Secretary of War Edward Stanton, and Stanton had been, or was, was responsible for Reconstruction, the policy of Reconstruction, or enforcing Reconstruction in the South. Reconstruction in the South as Secretary of War. He commanded Union troops. Congress responded by indicting Johnson. The House responded by indicting Johnson. 1973, Richard Nixon was accused of obstruction of justice, and his comments are up there. I am not a crook. I don't know his last words, but his first words were, "I am not a baby." In 1998, Bill Clinton was accused of perjury and obstruction of justice, and I won't go into that. No president has ever been convicted by the Senate. One of them, one of the presidents who was impeached, did quit. In 1868, Johnson came within one vote of being convicted, which voted, the Senate voted 35 to 19. 1973, the House Judiciary Committee passed three articles of impeachment supported by all of the Democrats and one-third of the Republicans, and that vote by the Republicans foretold indictment by the House and conviction by the Senate, and Nixon resigned. In 1998, the majority in the House knew that the impeachment would fail in the Senate, but it used the process to embarrass and weaken Clinton. Next slide, please. The petitioners say that Trump has violated two clauses related to emoluments. First of all, there's the foreign emoluments clause. Next slide, please. So on your left, you have a foreign emollient, and on the right, ruble notes, Russian rubles indicating a foreign emolument. They are not the same, but there is a similarity between the two. Both may be used to grease the palm. Next slide, please. An emolument is a salary, fee, or profit for employment of office, or office. The Constitution says, "No person holding any office of profit or trust shall without the consent of Congress accept any present emolument, office, or title of any kind whatsoever from any king, prince, or foreign state." And the complaint about Trump is that since his companies are earning money from clients who represent foreign governments, diplomats staying at Trump's hotel, for example, and since he still owns the corporations that own that hotel, he's violating the Constitution. The defense is, if the Chancellor of Germany pays the market rate to stay in the Trump hotel, that's not an emolument; it's just an economic exchange, room, exchange for room rate. And if she overpays in the hopes of winning favor, Trump is promised to hand over any such profits, although the details of that are still pending, like the details of his tax reserves. Next slide, please.
You have one minute.
Thank you. I'll use it well. Then there's the Constitution's domestic emoluments clause. The president shall not receive any emolument from the United States or any of them, other than his salary. And of course, the Secret Service's renting space in Trump Tower. Next slide, please. The petitioners want our congressman to take step one in the impeachment process. That would take place if Representative Kennedy asks the Judiciary Committee to investigate whether Trump should be impeached. Step two would take place, as we've said before, if the Judiciary Committee agrees to investigate and votes for one or more articles of impeachment. Step three would be for the House to indict, and step four would be a trial in the Senate. Next slide, please. The article before you does not conclude that the president has violated the Constitution. It only asks for an inspection. It is a modest request. The outcome of an investigation based on the emoluments clause is in doubt, because it's arguable whether payments for arms-length commercial services are in fact emoluments. Nonetheless, some Advisory Committee members agree that the claims of violation are troubling enough to justify an investigation.
Please conclude, sir.
Other members argued that unlike the case where budget items are only violated, the Advisory Committee doesn't know anything about constitutional law. This uncharacteristic blossoming of humility...
Could you tell us how the Advisory Committee voted, and then sign off? Mr. Sandman?
Yes, sir. When a motion to offer no recommendation failed 10 to 11. The Advisory Committee then voted 15 to 2 to 4 to recommend favorable action on the version of Article One presented in this meeting. Next slide, please.
Nope. Ms. Heller?
Ben Franco for a unanimous Board of Selectmen. At the outset, I want to make clear that the Board of Selectmen does not view this article as one of partisan politics. Instead, Article One is about the rule of law. To state the obvious, everybody in this room believes in the rule of law, the separation of government powers, and the federal and republican systems of government present in the United States. If we did not share these beliefs, each of us would not be here. At the heart of Article One of this special town meeting is about supporting, upholding, and enforcing our country's laws and basic governing framework. To be clear, the immediate question before this body is whether to request Congress opens an impeachment investigation against President Trump. The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends favorable action for many of the reasons that have been stated by previous speakers. So in the interest of brevity, I'll curtail my remarks and take the advice of Selectman Waszczynski, that he imparts at all public hearings that the Board of Selectmen holds. If you agree with the previous speaker, say so, and move on and make another point. So I will say the Board of Selectmen agrees with many of the points raised by previous speakers, and I will make a brief point that hasn't been addressed yet. The Board of Selectmen believes it's important for people and groups to voice their opinions about the actions of President Trump, including whether his or her actions, his actions, excuse me, warrant impeachment. The power to impeach is an essential check on the power of the executive branch of government and on the executive himself or herself, designed to prevent the use and accumulation of excessive power. If history tells us anything, power is often inappropriately utilized and centralized when indifference is rampant, when people are unmoved and unmotivated to express displeasure, defiance, or opposition. To paraphrase something David Frum, a former speechwriter for President George W. Bush, wrote in The Atlantic recently, "If people retreat into private life, if critics grow quiet, and President Trump is left unchallenged, he will slowly become more brazen, for those who question him will be increasingly the subject of intimidation." The Board feels it is appropriate and important for everyone who is upset and negatively affected by the actions of President Trump to speak out, including Brookline Town Meeting. By a vote of five to zero, the Board of Selectmen urges a vote of favorable action.
Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Burstein, please come forward.
Marty Rosenthal, still Town Meeting Nine, and co-chair of PACS. I enthusiastically support this, as does PACS. I heard about it very early in the process and welcomed it. As far as I'm concerned, and there are many reasons to impeach this so-called president, and they've been stated today, and there are even more that haven't been stated today. As a criminal lawyer, I have no doubt that he's guilty of obstruction of justice. I'm not sure it can be proven, but there's really no doubt in my mind from events in the last couple of weeks. I want to speak briefly to the fact, especially for the new Town Meeting members, we have a very long history of doing resolutions on national and international issues in Brookline. In fact, many of you know that the last question on our questionnaire, for as long as I can remember, and that's a while, is, do you favor doing resolutions at Town Meeting on non-Brookline issues? And we've had it there because of that history. My favorite really goes back to 1778, when a unanimous Brookline Town Meeting voted to not pass the mass Constitution until they added a Declaration of Rights. The vote then was 45 to nothing, but I have not yet found a roll-call vote. And there may be some before that, but that's my favorite. What I especially welcome about this resolution is, and also the silver lining of the Trump presidency, is all the new people who seem to be getting energized. We saw it in the candidates for Town Meeting. It made our job, especially Neil Gordon's job, harder in screening the questionnaires. I don't remember having this many candidates in a non-redistricting year, when it was only five seats in each precinct that was up for grabs. And it was overwhelming, and many of them have been elected, and they're here, and I'm really happy they're here, because many of them came from that same sentiment. My words of caution again, and my words of hope in this instance. Almost every day, I'm getting numerous emails from new groups and new movements against Trump. Just yesterday, I got one from an outgrowth of the Boston Women's March, March Forward Mass. Cindy Rowe, the Brookline Democratic Town Committee Chair, held a meeting at a house across from Lawrence School about, I think that was February. There'd be an article in our upcoming PACS newsletter by her, and she formed something called Force Multiplier. According to that article, 25 groups were there. I was there. There were groups I'd never heard of. Some of them were small, some of them were big, but it showed me the new energy that's coming out, which is a good thing. But my question is, the question we put in our PACS letter to all of you, which I think probably next year we'll go back to mailing, because many of you didn't print it out, we did it electronically this year, is the question by Harry Belafonte about civil rights activists, and his concern, that he stated a few months ago, that we have a struggle but not a movement. And what I'm hopeful is that all this new anti-Trump energy will turn into long-term organized infrastructure and energy.
You have one minute, sir.
Yes, thank you. I can reminisce about 40 years in one minute here, because it was the Vietnam War that motivated me and changed my life. I was a complacent Brookline graduate from the JFK era and the Happy Talk era of the 50s, and all of a sudden, I saw my peers getting killed, my peers dodging the draft. Fifty thousand Americans died, 2 to 3 million Vietnamese. We dropped more bombs on Laos than all the bombs in World War II. But many people like myself got motivated and stayed involved; many dropped out. The question I posed to all the anti-Trump people and the impeachment people is, this is a wonderful effort, but will you stay involved? Will you get involved? Will you get involved with groups like ACLU, Planned Parenthood, immigrant groups, climate groups, et cetera, et cetera? And/or will you go through this impeachment process and then drift back into the woods? Impeachment is a stretch.
Please conclude.
Washington is a cesspool of corruption by gerrymandered districts and campaign-financed House of Representatives. So if it went through, wonderful.
Please conclude, Mr. Rosenthal.
But if it doesn't, get involved, stay involved, and be organized.
Mr. Burstein, and then I'll take motion for the question.
Good evening. Michael A. Burstein, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12. I've been warned by the other members of my delegation to be brief. I have some brief comments here.
And by the moderator.
Sorry, sir?
And by the moderator.
And by the moderator, yes. I actually could sort of riff off of what Marty said here. Every year when I fill out the PACS questionnaire, I've always felt a little bit ambivalent about the resolutions. Many of you who have been in Town Meeting with me, I've been here for 16 years, know I have voted in favor of many resolutions, but I've always felt a little uncomfortable about the idea of resolutions until tonight. And this is something I would put out to those of us here who are uncomfortable just with the idea of voting a resolution, whether or not the resolution is about Trump or anything else. This resolution, I was actually expecting this to come from Brookline PACS. You know, I was expecting Marty Rosenthal to get up there and put an impeachment resolution out. When he didn't, I kind of shrugged my shoulders and said, okay, I guess we're not ready for it. And then, two regular registered voters in town, two citizens who are not involved in town government, were galvanized, and they came forward and said, we have to get this in front of Town Meeting. And they got over 400 signatures to get us to vote on this. And what this has told me is that there is no longer in my mind any question that the residents of this town really do feel that resolutions of this sort are the proper purview of Town Meeting. Going to the actual topic of the resolution, believe it or not, I was actually looking for some conservative Republican arguments in favor of it, because I have a few conservative Republican friends, some of whom could not bring themselves to vote for Trump, and some who did. And I was thinking, how could I reach out to those voters? How could I reach out to members of Town Meeting, you know, people in this body who very well may have possibly voted for Trump? The way I look at it is, turn this around. Maybe this will work. Ask yourself, all of these things that he is doing, would you be willing to accept them from somebody who is not politically aligned with you? Because if not, I warn you that that might eventually happen. Over the years I've been alive, I think I can say that from both parties, we have seen an expansion of presidential powers. Once the president's office has power, whoever's the next president doesn't usually, like, pull back on it. And at this point, we have a situation where a president, I believe, is exercising an attempt to take more power than the Constitution should allow. I'd like to conclude a little bit on this by thinking about the fact that because Trump was elected president, I can now say that I was born in the same county as a president of the United States. No other president before was born in Queens, New York. And I'm reminded of something that Nancy Daley quoted when she became the chair of the Selectmen.
You have two minutes.
Two minutes. Which was also from a fictional famous resident of Queens, New York, which was that with great power, there must also come great responsibility. And I think that Trump has not learned this lesson, but I think that we, as regular citizens of the United States, are learning this lesson. We have the power, we can use it, and we have the responsibility to do so. Thank you.
Is there a... I think we have probably heard all sides of this issue. I have the following people signed up to speak, who will be deprived of that opportunity if this motion succeeds: Mr. Fisher, Ms. Smith, Mr. Weitzman, and Mr. Miller. On the motion to close debate... Sit down. We haven't gotten to the vote yet. On the motion for the question to close debate, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I've had a couple of Town Meeting members worry about an electronic vote, because it forces people to vote for or against Trump, and President Trump, excuse me, sir. Remember that this resolution only is in support of an investigation into the impeachment of Mr. Trump. So I think that an electronic vote would not suffer from that kind of problem. If there are 35 people who want an electronic vote, we'll have one. And there are. This is main motion, Article One, STM One. We are voting on the motion on the rose-colored supplements, pages three to five, "Resolution in Support of the Investigation." Motion carries by a vote of 158 in favor, two opposed, and 13 abstentions. That concludes the business of our special town meeting, and we've already concluded the business of our annual town meeting. I call for a motion to dissolve the first special town meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The special town meeting is dissolved. Thank you very much for your attention, ladies and gentlemen.